Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 12th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Kahlo has a dog, let me tell ya.
He does not have a dog, he has a horse.
Let's do this again. Our featured dog this week is 165-pound Newfoundland Rottweiler mix, about three years old. It was an owner-turn-in from Amherst. Great personality. It's our largest dog so far, I think, we've had out here. But please stop by our dog kennel, it's a great pet. I wish I had room to take him home with me.
Looks like a bear.
He's beautiful.
Come on, Bluto.
He likes the limelight.
It does.
Amen.
Madam Clerk?
And a resolution's number one, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
And the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated in the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes?
Commissioners, I do not have any personnel issues this morning, but I am in receipt of a fact-finding report dealing with a bargaining unit at the county correctional facility, so we will need to discuss that. And that is a permissible subject under the Sunshine Law. I also want to update you on a potential piece of real estate. So those two issues, I don't know if Mr. Ennis has anything, but that's what I have this morning. Thank you.
Authorized payment of $1,000 Garland Misnick Funeral Home for services running in connection with veteran Patricia A. Kramer per Ohio Revised Code 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Men Resolution 05913 adopted November 9, 2005, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' Personnel Manual, Section 6.4 Sick Leave Conversion. Said amendment is to reflect Section 0, this paragraph applies to any employee who has received sick leave conversion payment upon separation or retirement from the county. Pursuant to paragraphs A through L of this section, any employee who returns to employment within the county within 30 days of separation or retirement from the county must repay any sick leave conversion payment received which exceeds the payment for unused sick leave provided pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 124.39B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we want to talk about this a little bit? The reasons why we had a lot of instances where people would quit or retire and take their sick leave and then come back the next day, and those kind of expenditures were just killing us. I did talk to Mr. Cordes about another option for people who have a lot of sick time, and I don't know if he had a chance to talk to the other two Commissioners. Possibly anybody having more than 500 sick days could buy out...
500 sick hours.
Sick hours, I'm sorry. 500 sick hours could maybe buy some out each year.
Well, the way you work me, I may have 500 days, but the... I had an opportunity to briefly, I think I briefly talked to Commissioner Blair about...
You talked to me about the other day.
Commissioner Kahlo, I'm so busy running up and down the hallway, you all begin to look alike to me.
Running. Turnabouts very likely.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I'll refrain from suggesting that you ran anywhere.
Thank you.
What Commissioner Kowski talked to me about was employees that end up with a lot of excess leave because the benefits provided under the Ohio Revised Code are rather generous. Now, let me point out, since we're having this discussion, we have the minimum required by Ohio law here. We have not provided for additional leave purposes. So just for the record of everybody out there, we don't give more than the Ohio Revised Code mandates. But in order to exhaust some of that sick leave so that we don't end up with these big payments after 15, 20, 25 years of employment, a lot of organizations have gone to an annual cash-out on some of that leave. What I recommended, because I think it's very prudent to maintain a healthy sick leave balance should you find yourself with an unfortunate event, that we don't have a policy that pays out unless you have at least 500 hours that you have in your bank, and then that you cash out a portion, you're allowed to cash out a portion of your annual sick leave that you don't use. So there's incentive, A, not to use it for good attendance, and B, that you continue to either bank or use a small portion of it, and then you can cash out. I was suggesting up to 10 days, which is about 65% of what they receive in a year. And that would only be on sick leave. That would not be on the vacation, because vacation's capped at three years by Ohio Revised Code on a roll regardless. So you cannot accumulate forever like you can on the sick leave. I think that in the long run, over a long period of time, it'll be more cost-effective because you'll be cashing out your current wages rather than your future wages. And it'll also incentivize the employees, and we may get away from some of these big spikes with people retiring and coming back. We just got another one this week, so we need to talk about that, too. But I do have a question for counsel on this, and I will have that. I started working on a draft last night, and I will have something for you guys to look at. We did discuss this about three years ago, and there's a resolution out there that indicated that we should draft up a policy like it is June of 2004. But we just never were able to mature the mechanics of the policy. Jerry, my understanding, by the way you wrote this, would appear to me that they're still eligible for cash-out if they retire.
That would be correct. There are some, we have some past policies that actually give us some discretion in what we do with sick pay. And we're allowed to put whatever conditions we want on that. The sick pay that is granted by the state statute, we have to abide by what the state statute provides.
So let me make clarification, the way I understand this, because I don't want the Board to have a misunderstanding, and then we have an event, and everybody's going, well, wait a minute, we were supposed to not have that happen. Under the Revised Code, they can cash out up, upon retirement, up to nine, half of 960 hours, which is 480 hours. So they would still, even if they separated now, be able to cash out 480 hours upon retirement? And this policy wouldn't preclude that?
There's a provision, well, we'll have to, perhaps we'll have to go over those provisions. There's a provision, and I think it comes out to something just under a month that they're entitled to get.
Because the Revised Code does the 960, half of 960 hours?
Right, but there's another provision that talks about what the minimum you can have is.
Okay, because...
We can get together and talk about it.
Okay, because this'll, because it still mandates the ORC. This'll stop the separating and returning, but there is some statutory language on the retiring and returning. So I just want you to know that some of that cycling is still gonna be, there's still gonna be a allowable, permissive amount of that going on if they retire, not if they separate. So we...
I guess I didn't, I didn't want to, there, in some instances, you're correct, but there are a lot of different provisions that apply to different agencies, and in fact, we have a couple of attorney general opinion requests out there to try and clarify that. So I just, I didn't want to say that categorically, Jim. There is some, and we've been talking with Clemens Nelson regarding that, so there are some issues there as to what policies by matter of law have to apply to some departments. So I can't give you a definitive number of hours that that covers, and that's why I put the language in there to say, whatever the state code says is a minimum, we must provide them.
Okay.
Quite frankly, we're waiting for an attorney general opinion rolling on some of those issues.
Our major concern is with the general fund. Other departments or agencies that do not receive half their funding or more from the general fund are exempted from our policy as long as they notify the Board of Commissioners that they've adopted a different policy. So there's a lot of departments, very few of the departments receive 50% or more, such as the MRDD, the Children's Services. So those departments have their own policy, so their statutory provisions would be applicable to them already.
Right.
We're mainly concerned with the general fund ones, and the one that I'm concerned with mostly is the 960, half of 960 hours. I believe that, you know, my reading of that will still allow them to cash out 460 hours upon retirement. So if they retire and they return, we'll still have some issue with that. I thought that if we developed a local policy, that we could supersede that provision in the Revised Code. Now, I guess that's my...
That's been our, that's been our interpretation of it. Clemens Nelson does not always agree with that, so we have decided on some of these issues to seek an attorney general to clarify that. Jim is correct. As the way we interpret it right now, you're right, it would be half of the 960, but I, there seems to be some debate over exactly what that means now.
So this'll probably be subject to further discussion when we have, this'll close some of the areas that the Board was concerned with, but we don't have, we don't have a, I believe, a all-inclusive yet, and we'll continue to work on it. So we'll be probably revisiting this in a few weeks to finish up.
This takes care of one part, though, that we were concerned about, where we had the real big payouts, where they left employment one day and started in a new position, and next day we paid them out at the higher rate.
Absolutely, and let me clarify that that didn't happen in the Commissioners' office.
Right.
We did pay them at the higher rate?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that was our big concern, the big dollar.
Well, let me put it to you this way. They've been paid at the higher rate, we haven't reimbursed them yet, and we're arguing about that. It's an ongoing battle. But I see little ability, at the end of the day, for us to continue to pursue that. You can decide, though, that not to reimburse that. That's your prerogative. We've reimbursed cash-outs upon retirement separation so that the salary accounts in these departments didn't drag down too much. Obviously, when somebody retires and they have vacations sick, those are benefits that they've accumulated, that they're entitled to. But the departments usually don't have the money to move around to be able to afford that, and we've always put money aside to deal with that. You're not obligated to do that, but it has been a practice. So whether you continue that practice or not is up to you.
The gist of it was that the employee was in fact retiring, not returning the next day or so to continue employment.
That's completely accurate. They were retiring or they were moving on to another element of their career, another evolution of their career, they weren't, their career wasn't coming back in 24 hours. So, yes, Commissioner Blair, you're 100% accurate. It was never intended to be used the way it's been used.
Thank you.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, instruct the clerk to advertise for proposals to be open on May 7 in the Commissioners' Back Conference Room. For one, prepaid merchandise cards for school dress shoes and athletic shoes, published in the Journal on April 23rd and 30th, and open at 2:00 p.m. Prepaid merchandise cards for school supplies, published in the Chronicle on April 23rd and 30th, and open at 2:30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, question. Is this similar to the Target clothing cards that we did last year that we had questions on? Similar program? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve and enter an agreement with Speedway Super America LLC of Enoch, Ohio, for the purchase of prepaid fuel cards using TANAF funds in the amount not exceed 200,000. Two proposals were received, this being most responsive complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question. And I saw this, and I meant to question it yesterday when the agenda came out. There is some issues with credit card use right now that's been changed with regard to policy and procedure for use. And I thought the auditor's office, remember, we talked about this during the audit, and it came out last year that we needed to look at those policies. Lisa, are you vaguely familiar with them?
Jerry, I've been doing a lot of work on the IRS, but if this doesn't work, please, I have things...
This is for...
TANAF funds.
For people with transportation begging for it to work.
I was on 14. Accelerated this morning.
He's running down the hall.
Hope he doesn't trip.
Sorry, I'll wait till the next one.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Service Department to utilize the agency's MasterCard for the year 2007, not exceed 20,000, Shell Oil Gasoline Car, not exceed 200, for work-related items to include conferences and others as lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordes?
Same question. Have we, I know there was concerns during the post-audit, there was no problem, so let me say that first, but there was, there was some concerns that the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code had changed and evolved to a point where we may need to do something further to be in compliance. Jerry, do you recall that?
Yes, and I believe at our last audit review committee, we submitted a proposed revision of how we're gonna handle credit cards. So we're in the process of developing that.
So there's no problem with, I'm more concerned with the MasterCard because the gas cards have been pretty standard, but then I heard at that post-audit meeting that gas cards are now being also considered differently. So will we be in compliance by approving this resolution with the new policy?
Well, to be honest with you, I'll have to, because it's a real long, lengthy thing, so...
And just as a matter of question, whose policy is this that we're talking about?
It would probably, I think it has to be a county-wide policy on use, but the, under the code, there's certain stipulations, actually through the auditor's office, that for monitoring, we would develop our own policy in conformity with the code, and then he would, he would monitor that policy for compliance. Lisa, you're shaking your head yes.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
Mr. Carr, I believe these elected official can have their own policy as long as it falls within those guidelines.
But at the end of the day, the Board of Commissioners is the only one that can authorize the use of county credit cards.
Correct.
Okay? So that's why I was asking if the policies were in place before you authorized the use.
So again, who is developing these policies?
Well, our office, well, the state has dictated the parameters under which these must be done, and we've been working on it. We put together a draft of, it is really not so much defining what you can charge, is how you, how you account for it and account for the charges that are being made. So it is more bookkeeping and detailed process, more red tape that's involved in doing these, and I guess it's an effort to kind of discourage them because it's one of those things where you have to go through so many steps to be able to do it.
And a couple of years ago, there were some abuses at the state using agency credit cards, which caused them to tighten the policies. When the state usually tightens their policies, they usually tighten them for us, too, and we have to conform because of, being a creature of the legislature. So they did have quite a laundry list of misuse of credit cards at the state level. Do you feel comfortable with them approving this?
Yeah, and it's not so much what you're approving here as authorizing the use of the cards, it's just that when these departments go to use it, they're going to have to know that there are different standards and different accounting methods they're going to have to comply with in order to use the cards.
Wouldn't that be the responsibility of their fiscal officer?
It would be, but you, remember, you approved the card. If their policy isn't in place and correct, you're approving use under a policy that A, it may not exist, or B, is not in compliance with current rules and regulations. I'm just trying to make sure that you don't do that, that's all.
No, okay.
This is actually deleting an employee so they can't use a credit card this time.
Well, but you know what? By deleting employees, you're agreeing to the ones that are still there, okay? So I'm not trying to make a big issue of this, I just know that it came up at that audit, and it was something that we discussed quite a bit. If counsel indicates that there's no difficulty, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of these changes taking place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve and enter an LPG agreement with ODOT for Colorado Avenue, Sheffield Village, which will permit the county to bid in a ministry that contract authorizes the engineer to execute all documents pertaining to this project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve and enter into Subdivers Agreement with North Craft and Realty LLC for Barrington Park subdivision number two, Eaton Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Receive and accept the 2007 Annual Highway Condition Report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
A war contract to Lytle Construction Inc. booster in the amount of $360,684.38 for the 2007 ship and seal program to be funded 100% with MVGT funds from the account supplies and materials. Four bids were received, this being most responsive complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Provide for the issuance and sale notes of the County of Lorraine, Ohio, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,550,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purchase of one, paying the interest and principal of, and to retire the county's Highway Improvement Note Series 2006, and two, paying costs of issuance thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordes, how soon before we look to going to permanent financing?
Well, I think we'll stay in notes for a while while they do projects. There was some issues early this week on whether we should recapitalize interest or not. We left that to the auditor and the county engineer, so whether he wanted to pay debt service now on the notes or recapitalize that. Clearly, if he recapitalizes the interest, that decreases the overall amount of money that can be applied to the program. My understanding is that they've decided to recapitalize the interest. Our previous resolution allows for the auditor to debit that, that interest payment, and he was looking to do that, but after consulting with Mr. Conney, I think that they've decided to roll it back in, and that's what this note says. So I anticipate that they'll probably stay in notes for a while longer until we have every project done. We have, we have up to seven years to stay in notes. I don't like to do that because rates are changing, and we're seeing that right now, and that's something I want to talk to when I come into my business about what we want to do with some refinancing on some of our notes. It's all about market timing, so I think that they probably should roll to bonds within the next year. These are one-year notes, so I believe right recent, so we're talking probably next May or June of looking at bonds.
But that's the way you want to go with the projects until we're done by then or later?
Well, but at some point, we need to, we need to put all the financing together and get to market with this. The, but I'll have to see how the projects go later this year. We have up to 5 million in the resolution. I think we're at about 3.5 million. I see Ken in the back of the room, trying to hide back there. We're at about 3.5 million, Ken?
Yeah.
Can you spend another million and a half in the next year?
Don't give him the opportunity. He will.
I guess not, I don't know.
No, he said yes.
Oh, he said yes? I didn't hear him, I'm sorry. So, you know, maybe this time next year, we'll be talking about doing some permanent financing, moving it over.
When do we go back to Moody's to get our bond rating relooked at?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question. I spent about an hour Monday evening on the phone with our underwriters. I would like to go back at the end of May. I want to propose a refinancing of the outstanding Justice Center debt. We have some notes that are callable beginning in year 2013. The market is changing, and we're losing the advantage on the refinance. I had hoped to get about $800,000 to $900,000 out of a refinance of our later issues. Right now, we're down to about $600,000, so we need to make our way back there. I think that we can achieve at least, at a minimum, $600,000 to $700,000 worth of savings on our outstanding issues for the Justice Center. We owe about $18 million on the Justice Center, about $12 million of those are callable notes that we can refinance. Now, those notes do not come due until 2013, so we're gonna be calling them early and then reissuing a little bit less costly paper on those. We will not see any immediate results from that, but for the long-term planning of the county's economic future, we'll see some benefit to that beginning in 2013. I'd like to start getting ready to go to Moody's, I think around the 23rd or 24th of May. I had some proposed dates, because it takes us a little bit over a month to prepare ourselves to make the presentation, and it's gonna be a tough visit. It was, it was a hard visit last year. This visit's gonna be extremely difficult, and I also would like to know the outcome of the count on the referendum on the sales tax, so that we have a positive position on how we're going to deal with those things. Moody's, especially Moody's, they're the most pressing with us, and they're gonna, they're gonna want answers to a lot of questions. And I think that we stand a good chance of being able to answer those questions, but I think that we should prepare ourselves should, should the count not go our way, which I think we're anticipating not happening, that we'll probably slip a grade. That said, we've been upgraded four times since 2000, so we're not gonna be in a terrible position by one downgrade. My question to the underwriters was, should we take a pass on trying to refinance these notes, because the savings comes in future years? What is your look at the market, and do we need to alert the bond, excuse me, the bond rating agencies of our position right now in Lorraine County? He kind of laughed and said, if you don't think they know what's going on in Lorraine County, then you're living in a glass bubble somewhere, because, he says, they monitor the groups that they rate very closely. So if we don't get there and tell the story, somebody else is gonna tell the story for us. And usually, on an annual basis, I spend several hours on the phone with both rating agencies, updating them on the fiscal condition of the county, jobs, growth, the community, and what's going on. But we need to go back now, and we need to make that personalized visit, and we do have relationships there, and we need, we need to, I always say it's telling the story. And we gotta, so rather than them, rather than them thinking they know what's going on here, we need to tell them what's going on here. And plus, almost everything that we told them we would do last year to deal with this, we've exercised all those options within our statements. condition, they look at the condition of your entire community, and they also look at the leadership that's involved with dealing with those issues and how proactively they are. So I think we stand... We're going to be in good shape, but we should brace for that one slip and hope that we don't get it.
Do we know when the petitions are going over to the Board of Elections for certification? I know we've passed a 10-day window, but I don't know when the auditor's office is actually sending them over.
I anticipate it's going to be tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
That's not written in stone, but that's my understanding.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If they go over tomorrow, then I think the Board of Elections has 10 days to count?
That's correct.
10 working days or calendar days?
Calendar days.
Calendar days.
So, you know, we'll definitely know a strategy. Again, I'm not overly optimistic that that many votes are not going to be... that many signatures are going to be cast out, but we do need to know for certain, and then we'll sit down, we'll talk a little bit of strategy about how we're going to position ourselves. But I anticipate several hours of meetings in New York this time, and that we're going to have to talk about a look forward, probably at least a three-year look forward with them to tell them what we're going to do, because obviously, we still have a significant gap between our resources and our expenditures, and we're going to have to explain to them how we're going to deal with that over the next two or three years, and where we think our final carryover numbers in relation to our expenditures are going to come in. So, you know, it's going to be... It'll be an exciting time, but it'll be a difficult time to deal with, so...
Yay!
It'll be a real challenge.
I think we're up to it. So, the end of May is the time period I think that we're targeting right now. Okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
I'm voting on number 20, right? Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, can you minister it?
Thank you. That was one issue I was going to bring up. The other was that we... I'm pleased to tell you that we worked on a wire grant, and I informed you about it about two weeks ago. I was going to give you a copy of the wire grant this week, but fortunately and unfortunately, the state came back Friday afternoon and had a long list of clarifications and rewrites and things they wanted to see in our wire grant. I'm going to tell you why they came back and what we did. They came back because we're this close to being one of the two grants submitted from the state of Ohio to the Department of Labor for a regional economic development workforce initiative, and so it was really exciting. We did a lot of checking around. Only those people that were at the very top of consideration received a letter for clarification and rewrites because they wanted to include some additional elements. Along with our partners at Magnet, workforce, the workforce development, and with the college, we spent a lot of time over the weekend, and then all day Monday and into Monday night, redoing our wire proposal. And I'm pleased to tell you, we finally got Cuyahoga County and the city of Cleveland to buy into our innovative manufacturing proposals for northeast Ohio. So, we have been getting letters of support all week. Everybody's now getting behind the proposal that came out of Lorain County that was developed in conjunction with our regional partners. We think we're going to be one of the two. There's 11 that were submitted. There was only three or four that were seeking clarification, and our understanding is that we're right there, and I'm hoping that we'll be one of the two. We should know, I think, tomorrow. I think they have to be a DOL tomorrow. We're bracing now for the state maybe to come back and be looking at maybe some additions they may want tonight to further amplify our positions with that. But it's been a really exciting time working on this, and I cannot tell you how much work went into this from our partners at the college, and again, workforce development, and especially with Magnet, with Judith Crocker. This has been one dynamite team that's, you know, virtually worked around the clock, and as soon as I find out any news, I'll let you know. And since we rewrote most of the grant, I got it yesterday, I'll get a copy to you. There's no sense giving you the old version of that grant, but your support of that process, because you did put some funding into that in conjunction with sharing the cost with the college, was well-placed. And even if we don't get selected as one of the two, it was really, really great to see this whole region come together behind the leadership of Lorain County and what you guys asked us to do and supported doing. So when I have more information, I'll let you know. So I really have this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Innes, Assistant County Prosecutor.
I would like in an executive session, I have to talk with commissioners about one matter of pending litigation and one matter of imminent litigation. Actually, maybe two.
Commissioners report.
Well, I have some good news for many of our Lorain County dog owners. On behalf of the Ohio Pet Fund and the Pet Program Funding Board, Lorain County Commissioners and the Dog Kennel were awarded a $4,000 grant for a spay and neuter program in Lorain County. Lorain County Board of Commissioners, and with the help of the Friendship Animal Protective League, have joined a collaborative effort with the aid of Pet Fix in Cleveland, which has a mobile spay and neuter facility, and they will provide free spay and neuter services to qualifying residents in Lorain County. The event is going to be May 17th. It will be held at the Animal Protective League on Marie Ridge. The address is 8303. Animals will be brought there between 8:00 and 8:15, where they will be registered and tagged. After the procedure, the dog will move to the clinic area of the Animal Protective League, where they have post-op, and they will recover and be observed there, and then the owners will be able to pick their dogs up between 3:00 and 3:15. There are some eligibility requirements. The county residents with an unaltered male or female dog that does not exceed 60 pounds in weight, the income of the owner's family does not exceed 150% of the federal poverty guideline, and at the time of registration, the owner will have to provide proof of means of Medicaid cards, W-2s, or other tax form to prove their eligibility. They will also have to bring proof of rabies, and if they don't have that, there will be a $6 charge at the time of registration. The pre-registration is mandatory before the event, which is, again, May 17th, to provide their eligibility requirements, and in order to pre-register, you need to contact the Animal Protective League, and their phone number is 322-4321, and call them during business hours for questions and inquiries. So, those of you that can't afford to get your dog spayed or neutered, this is going to be a very good opportunity for you to do so at no cost to you. Thank you.
Great. Good job.
We'll have more. Until the $4,000 is used up, we'll continue to have that Pet Fix come out and do the service, and once the $4,000 is used up, then it's gone, but we should be able to spay and neuter quite a few dogs in Lorain County, so happy about that.
Cool. Two meetings upcoming. On Saturday, April 21st, at Brunswick Recreation Center, NOLA, which is the Northeast Ohio League for Leadership and Advocacy, is pleased to announce a dialogue with Lieutenant Governor Lee Fisher. It's a joint cooperative organization designed to advance the interests of northeast Ohio. It's a voluntary organization comprised of elected officials from county, municipal, and township governments. And on Friday, May 4th, four weeks from today, the Lorain County Community Alliance will host their annual Lorain County Transportation Day here in this facility, and we have commitments from Ohio Department of Transportation, NOAACA, Lorain County Engineer, Ken Carney, and Ken Prendergast, representing all aboard Ohio, and I believe that the West Shore corridor stakeholders will hold their meeting at that time also.
You forgot, May 1st, Lorain County Commissioner, State of the County Address also, Commissioner.
No, I left that for you.
Oh, okay.
Betty, I think that May 4th is three weeks away, not four.
Whatever... How many other weeks it's away? It's May 4th.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I had the opportunity, I was invited to speak at SOR this week, Steel Workers Organization of Active Retirees, to discuss the sales tax and why we didn't put it on the ballot, and what the needs of the county were. It was a good meeting. Spoke to a lot of people, probably about 25 or 30 retirees there, so we made it through the meeting. I think they understand to a degree what the commissioners, why we made the decision we made. Also, again, going back to the wire grant, I'd like to thank Richland County Commissioners. Gary Oude, I spoke to early Monday morning after a phone call, Mr. Cordes, and they came on board, supporting our wire grant, which was nice. And also, along with Sherrod Brown's office and Beth Tames, we contacted on Friday, it was a federal holiday, and they got back to us by Monday with support for the project. So I'd like to thank them for everything they did. It was a heck of a team effort. I'm done.
And it is three weeks from today. Thank you, Mr. Cordes, for the correction. I get lost in time.
Madam Clerk?
Court Correspondents?
Move the reading to be waived?
Second, I'd just like to make one notation before we vote on that. Item number one, I'd like to make note of the Western Reserve Resource Conservation and Development Council of Northeast Ohio has received the Outstanding Council Award at the North Regional, North Central Regional Meeting in Frankenmuth, Michigan. This was given for their work in implementing its mission to plan, promote, and implement conservation and sustainable use of natural resources in both rural and urban areas. Lorain County is a member of this council, and since they meet on the same day as we do, Vince Urban of the Lorain County Community Development Department is our representative to this council. We hosted them earlier this year when we didn't have a meeting on a normal day, so we're pleased that they were recognized, and congratulations to them.
You should have gone there. I haven't been to Frankenmuth since I was a kid. It's Christmas all year long in Frankenmuth, Michigan.
You little boys never behave.
And you got the right color all the time.
You're right.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Nancy Fenney from Lorain Solon Water. I was here approximately two weeks ago asking and requesting that the commissioners fund the drainage program for 2007 of $100,000. It's my understanding that the voting is possibly would go into referendum. Please correct me if I'm wrong. If that amount of $100,000 sounds too much, at least I'm asking for $30,000 to finish Schroeder Ditch project. This project is a two-and-a-half-mile ditch. Lorain County Airport is very vital to this. Most of their drainage flows into this ditch, and I'm hoping you can give me some time of answer today.
Well, we certainly have an interest in what happens at the airport. Schroeder Ditch, according to your request, is located in Carlisle and New Russia Townships.
Yes, it is.
I'd just like to reiterate that the county, as everybody knows here, lost $3.5 million worth of local government funds, but those monies were not lost to our county as a whole. They were redistributed to the various municipalities, townships, and villages in our county, and I did a little arithmetic earlier when this was in the initial stages, and the townships collectively received $500,000 distributed among them. And since the Schroeder Ditch is in Carlisle and New Russia Townships, I'm wondering if perhaps they could be approached to pay a portion of the cost.
Yeah, maybe we could do a matching thing.
Well, it's important to them.
We've got to figure out where we're going to take Peter to Rob Paul, and, you know, take it out of one pocket and put it in the other pocket.
There is no Peter and Paul. We're on Tom and Jack.
Where are they?
Well, but I think it's worth asking for, you know? If you never ask, you never get.
Absolutely. I did not realize the townships had that kind of funding, nor did I know to ask that. They did, and they took it from us. Oh, okay.
Well, they didn't take it. It was given to them.
Yeah, it was given to them. It was given to them.
And on a proportionate basis. I mean, collectively, they got, but not all of them got all that much, but a half a million dollars is quite an increase collectively for the 18 townships. And I think that they should certainly be approached to ask if they would be willing to share a portion of it.
So it's my understanding that if the townships do approve $15,000, that you will match the other $15,000 so we complete Schroeder Ditch. Yes, I would do that.
I would be in support of that, Nancy, if you can go back to the townships that affect and see if they each come up with $7,500.
I would do so.
Yeah. We're not trying to be unreasonable here, just we have to watch the...
I understand. I'm just following up as your request when I was here two weeks ago. That's all. Thank you. We'll see in another couple weeks, right?
Yes. Well, we want you to keep coming back, Nancy. Thank you very much.
Speaking of the airport, this week I went out to the CBCF, and they have guys out there that they're willing to do community service. Do we have any weed whacking or anything that needs to be done over at the airport?
I got so much need for guys willing to do work like that, just bring them on, Commissioner. Forget about the airport. I could have them working around here, I could have them working out at the dog pound, I could have them working over at Job and Family Services. There's always cigarette butts and weeds to be pulled and grass to be knocked down, so we do have a program. We use a lot of those, and I can always use a lot more.
Well, he said they haven't been utilizing the inmates over there for quite some time, and Mike Willett said, you know, "We have the manpower here, so a lot of community service needs in this county."
I love the death out of Mike Willett. I worked with him a lot of years, but usually, when he does me a favor, it usually has some downstream economic cost. So, I will have somebody contact Mike, and he and I were the originators of the, with Judge Zaleski, the first CSP worker program we put into place in the early '90s, mid-'90s, and we've been successfully doing that for a long time. I like when they come out and they work for the county, because then all of the county residents receive benefit from their community service. So, is he the contact person, or did he give you somebody else to talk to?
I have another name. I have his card in the office. I'll give it to you.
That'd be great. We can always use a lot of those workers.
Right.
No one else? Make a motion to move into executive session as outlined by the administrator and prosecutor.
I'll second.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel.
We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license.
We also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5, and the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured or needs extreme medical care.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash. Litter lowers property values, and it's costly to clean up."
Keep Lorain County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay? Is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby, and Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorain County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice. They kind of turn your mood around once they come... When you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that, so we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now."
Yeah, because like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop Yeah, because like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail. And then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger. So we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset. But we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play. And it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really liked the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him. So I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered. And that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, "Don't bother me. I won't bother you." And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet. And so I called, and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out. And there we were. So we rode our way home. So it was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog. He's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website, and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Hattaway Street, just south of Illyria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the special heart tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here. This is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you. Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 12th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Kaylo has a dog, let me tell you.
He does not have a dog. He has a horse.
Let's do this again. Our featured dog this week is 165-pound Newfoundland Rottweiler mix, about three years old. It was an owner-turn-in from Amherst. Great personality. It's our largest dog so far, I think, we've had out here. But please stop by our Dog Kennel. It's a great pet. I wish I had room to take him home with me.
Looks like a bear. He's beautiful.
Come on, Bluto. Come on, Bluto.
He likes the limelight.
It does.
Amen.
Madam Clerk?
Senate Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Men's Resolution Zero Five, Nineteen Thirteen, adopted November ninth, two thousand and five, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners Personnel Manual, Section Six Point Four, Sick Leave Conversion. Said amendment is to reflect Section Zero. This paragraph applies to any employee who has received sick leave conversion payment upon separation or retirement from the county pursuant to paragraphs A through L of this section. Any employee who returns to employment within the county within thirty days of separation or retirement from the county must repay any sick leave conversion payment received, which exceeds the payment for unused sick leave, provided pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one twenty-four point thirty-nine B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we want to talk about this a little bit? The reasons why? We had a lot of instances where people would quit or retire and take their sick leave and then come back the next day, and those kind of expenditures were just killing us. I did talk to Mr. Cordes about another option for people who have a lot of sick time, and I don't know if he had a chance to talk to the other two commissioners. Possibly anybody having more than 500 sick days could buy out...
500 sick hours.
Sick hours, I'm sorry. 500 sick hours could maybe buy some out each year.
Well, the way you work me, I may have 500 days, but I had an opportunity to briefly, I think I briefly talked to Commissioner Blair about...
You talked to me about the other day. I'm so busy running up and down the hallway, you all begin to look alike to me.
Turnabout, sir.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I will refrain from suggesting that you ran anywhere.
Thank you.
The, what Commissioner Kocowski talked to me about was employees that end up with a lot of excess leave because the benefits provided under the Ohio Revised Code are rather generous. Now, let me point out, since we're having this discussion, we have the minimum required by Ohio law here. We have not provided for additional leave purposes. So just for the record of everybody out there, we don't give more than the Ohio Revised Code mandates. But in order to exhaust some of that sick leave so that we don't end up with these big payments after 15, 20, 25 years of employment, a lot of organizations have gone to an annual cash out on some of that leave. What I recommend, because I think it's very prudent to maintain a healthy sick leave balance should you find yourself with an unfortunate event, that we don't have a policy that pays out unless you have at least 500 hours that you have in your bank, and then that you cash out a portion, you're allowed to cash out a portion of your annual sick leave that you don't use. So there's incentive, A, not to use it for good attendance, and B, that you continue to either bank or use a small portion of it, and then you can cash out, I was suggesting up to 10 days, which is about 65% of what they receive in a year. And that would only be on sick leave. That would not be on the vacation because vacation's capped at three years by Ohio Revised Code on a roll regardless. So you cannot accumulate forever like you can on the sick leave. I think that in the long run, over a long period of time, it'll be more cost-effective because you'll be cashing out a current wages rather than a future wages. And it'll also incentivize the employees, and we may get away from some of these big spikes with people retiring and coming back. We just got another one this week, so we need to talk about that, too. But I do have a question for counsel on this, and I will have that, I started working on a draft last night, and I will have something for you guys to look at. We did discuss this about three years ago, and there's a resolution out there that indicated that we should draft up a policy like it is June of 2004. But we just never were able to mature the mechanics of the policy. Jerry, my understanding, by the way you wrote this, would appear to me that they're still eligible for cash out if they retire.
That would be correct. There are some, we have some past policies that actually give us some discretion in what we do with sick pay. And we're allowed to put whatever conditions we want on that. The sick pay that is granted by the state statute, we have to abide by what the state statute provides.
So let me make clarification, the way I understand this, because I don't want the board to have a misunderstanding, and then we have an event, and everybody's going, "Well, wait a minute, we were supposed to not have that happen." Under the Revised Code, they can cash out upon retirement up to nine, half of 960 hours, which is 480 hours. So they would still, even if they separated now, be able to cash out 480 hours upon retirement. And this policy wouldn't preclude that.
There's a provision, well, we'll have to, perhaps we'll have to go over those provisions. There's a provision, and I think it comes out to something just under a month that they're entitled to get.
Because the Revised Code does the 960, half of 960 hours.
Right, but there's another provision that talks about what the minimum you can have is.
Okay, because...
We can get together and talk about it.
Okay, because this'll, because it still mandates the ORC. The, this'll stop the separating and returning, but there is some statutory language on the retiring and returning. So I just want you to know that some of that cycling is still going to be, there's still going to be a allowable, permissive amount of that going on if they retire, not if they separate. So we...
I guess I didn't, I didn't want to, there, in some instances, you're correct, but there, there are a lot of different provisions that apply to different agencies. And in fact, we have a couple of attorney general opinion requests out there to try and clarify that. So I just, I didn't want to say that categorically, Jim. There is some, and we've been talking with Clemens Nelson regarding that. So there are some issues there as to what policies by matter of law have to apply to some departments. So I can't give you a definitive number of hours that that covers, and that's why I put the language in there to say, whatever the state code says as a minimum, we must provide them.
Okay.
Quite frankly, we're waiting for an attorney general opinion ruling on some of those issues.
Our major concern is with the general fund. Other departments or agencies that do not receive half their funding or more from the general fund are exempted from our policy as long as they notify the Board of Commissioners that they've adopted a different policy. So there's a lot of departments, very few of the departments receive 50% or more, such as the MRDD, the Children's Services. So those departments have their own policies. So their statutory provisions would be applicable to them already.
Right.
We're mainly concerned with the general fund ones, and the one that I'm concerned with mostly is the 960, half of 960 hours. I believe that, you know, my reading of that will still allow them to cash out 460 hours upon retirement. So if they retire and they return, we'll still have some issue with that. I thought that if we developed a local policy, that we could supersede that provision in the Revised Code. Now, I guess that's my...
That's been our, that's been our interpretation of it. Clemens Nelson has, does not always agree with that, so we have decided on some of these issues to seek an attorney general to clarify that. Jim has corrected. As the way we interpret it right now, you're right, it would be half of the 960. But I, there seems to be some debate over exactly what that means now.
So this will probably be subject to further discussion. We have, this'll close some of the areas that the board was concerned with, but we don't have, we don't have a, I believe, a all-inclusive yet, and we'll continue to work on it. So we'll be probably revisiting this in a few weeks to finish it up.
This takes care of one part, though, that we were concerned about, where we had the real big payouts, where they left employment one day and started in a new position, and the next day we paid them out at the higher rate.
Absolutely. And let me clarify that, that didn't happen in the Commissioners' office.
Right.
We did pay them at the higher rate.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that was our big concern, the big dollars.
Well, let me put it to you this way. They've been paid at the higher rate. We haven't reimbursed them yet, and we're arguing about that. It's an ongoing battle. But I see little ability at the end of the day for us to continue to pursue that. You can decide, though, that not to reimburse that. That's your priority. We've reimbursed cash outs upon retirement separation so that the salary accounts in these departments didn't drag down too much. Obviously, when somebody retires and they have vacations, sick, those are benefits that they've accumulated, that they're entitled to. But the departments usually don't have the money to move around to be able to afford that, and we've always put money aside to deal with that. You're not obligated to do that, but it has been a practice. So whether you continue that practice, it's not up to you.
The gist of it was that the employee was in fact retiring, not returning the next day or so to continue employing.
That's completely accurate. They were retiring, or they were moving on to another element of their career, another evolution of their career. evolution of their career. They weren't, their career wasn't coming back in 24 hours. So yes, Commissioner Blair, you're, you're 100% accurate. It was never intended to be used the way it's been used.
Thank you.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, instruct the clerk to advertise for request for proposals to be open on May 7th in the Commissioner's Back Conference Room for one prepaid merchandise cards for school dress shoes and athletic shoes published in the Journal on April 23rd and 30th and open at 2:00 PM. Prepaid merchandise cards for school supplies published in the Chronicle on April 23rd and 30th and open at 2:30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, question, is this similar to the Target Clothing Cards that we did last year that we had questions on? Similar program? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Approve and enter an agreement with Speedway Super America LLC of Enoch, Ohio for the purchase of prepaid fuel cards using Tana Funds in the amount not to exceed 200,000. Two proposals were received, this being the most responsive complying specifications.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question. And, and I saw this and I meant to question it yesterday when the agenda came out. There is some issues with credit card use right now that's, that's been changed with regard to, um, policy and procedure for use. And I thought the audit of this office, we talked about this during the audit and it came out last year that we needed to look at those policies. Lisa, are you vaguely familiar with them?
Jerry's been doing a lot of work on the IRS, but if this doesn't turn plays, I don't think he's...
This, this is for...
Tana Funds.
Tana...
I was on 14. Accelerated this morning.
He's running down the hall.
Hope he doesn't trip.
Sorry, I'll wait till the next one.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services Department to utilize the agency's MasterCard for the year 2007, not exceed 20,000 Shell Oil Gasoline Car, not exceed 200 for work-related items to include conferences and others as lodging, transportation, telephone, gas and oil, minor vehicle maintenance and emergency repairs, county-owned leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordes?
Same question. Have we, uh, I know there was concerns during the post-audit. There was no problem, so let me say that first, but there was, there was some concerns that the, the, the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code had changed and, and evolved to a point where we may need to do something further to be in compliance. Jerry, do you recall that?
Yes, and, uh, I believe at our last audit review committee, we submitted a proposed revision of how we're going to handle, um, credit cards. So we're, we're in the process of developing that.
So there's no problem with, I'm more concerned with the MasterCard because the gas cards have been pretty standard, but then I heard at that post-audit meeting that gas cards are now being also considered differently. So will we be in compliance by approving this resolution with the new policy?
Well, to be honest with you, I'll have to, because it's a real long, lengthy thing, so...
And just as a matter of question, whose policy is this that we're talking about?
It would probably, I think it has to be a county-wide policy on, on, on use, but the, under the code, there's certain stipulations, actually to the orders office that for, for monitoring, we would develop our own policy in conformity with the code and then he would, he would monitor that policy for compliance. Lisa, you're shaking your head yes? Okay.
Mr. Carr, I believe each elected official can have their own policy as long as it falls within those guidelines.
But, but at the end of the day, the Board of Commissioners is the only one that can authorize the use of county credit cards.
Correct.
Okay? So that's why I was asking if the policies were in place before you authorized the use.
So again, who is developing these policies?
Well, our office, well, the, the state has dictated the parameters under which these must be done and we've been working on it. We put together a draft of, it is really not so much defining, uh, what you can charge is how you, how you account for it and, and, uh, account for the, the charges that are being made. So it is more bookkeeping and detailed process, you know, more red tape that's involved in doing these and I guess it's an effort to kind of discourage them because it's one of those things where you have to go through so many steps to be able to do it.
And a couple of years ago, there were some abuses at the state using agency credit cards, which caused them to tighten the policies. When, when the state usually tightens their policies, they usually tighten them for us too and we have to conform because of, being a creature of the legislature. So, uh, they did have quite a, quite a laundry list of misuse of credit cards at the state level. Do you feel comfortable with them approving this or...
Yeah, and it's not so much what you're approving here is author, author, authorizing the use of the cards, it's just that, uh, when these departments go to use it, they're going to have to know that there are different standards and different accounting methods they're going to have to comply with in order to use the cards.
Wouldn't that be the responsibility of their fiscal officer?
It, it would be, but you, remember, you approved the card. If their policy isn't in place and, and correct, you're approving use under a policy that A, may not exist or B, is not, uh, in compliance with current rules and regulations. I'm just trying to make sure that you don't do that, that's all.
No, okay.
This is actually deleting employees so they can't use a credit card.
But you know what? By deleting employees, you're agreeing to the ones that are still there, okay? So I, I'm not trying to make a big issue with this. I just know that it came up at that audit and it was something that we discussed quite a bit. If counsel indicates that there's no difficulty, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of these changes taking place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve and enter an LPG agreement with ODOT for Colorado Avenue Sheffield Village, which will permit the county to bid in a ministry, the contract authorizing the engineer to execute all documents pertaining to this project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Proven enter in a subdividers agreement with North Craft and Realty LLC for Barrington Park Subdivision Number Two, Eaton Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Accept and adopt the road standards for Columbia Township into Lorraine County Engineer's specifications and regulations for subdivision development.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Receive and accept the 2007 Annual Highway Condition Report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Award Contract to Lytle Construction Inc., booster in the amount of $360,684.38 for the 2007 Ship and Seal Program to be funded 100% with MVGT funds from the account's supplies and materials. Four bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Provide for the issuance and sale notes of the County of Lorraine, Ohio, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 2,550,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purchase of one, paying the interest and principal of, and to retire the county's Highway Improvement Note Series 2006, and two, paying costs of issuance thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, Mr. Cordes, how soon before we look to going to permanent financing?
Well, I think we'll stay in notes for a while, uh, while they do projects. There was some issues earlier this week on whether we should recapitalize interest or not. We left that to the auditor and, um, the county engineer. So whether he wanted to pay debt service now on the notes or recapitalize that, clearly if he recapitalizes the interest, that decreases the overall amount of money that can be applied to the program. My understanding is that they, they've, they've decided to recapitalize the interest. Our previous resolution allowed for the auditor to debit that, that interest payment and he was looking to do that, but after consulting with Mr. Conney, I think that they've decided to roll it back in and that's what this note says. So, so I, I anticipate that they'll probably stay in notes for a while longer until we've, we have every project done. We have, we, we have up to seven years to stay in notes. I don't like to do that because rates are changing and we're seeing that right now and, um, that's something I want to talk to when I come into my business about what